First and foremost, I want to let you all, all of you, everybody, know that we in the Palm Heights Neighborhood Association took a vote after our spirited discussion last month, and we are unanimously and emphatically opposed to the scheme of having a parking garage and a tram to take people in and out of the parks. We feel very strongly about it. We won't just stop at passing resolutions. We talked to our councilwoman, and we will do whatever else is in our power to stop that thing happening. Let me just say that I've been reading Jane Jacobs's The Death and Life of American Cities, and her whole perspective is that cities are organisms, that you don't just impose some kind of a plan. I know that it's attractive to look at Brackenridge Park and say, "Ooh, green space. Let's make it really, really green." I know the old environmentalists will be for that. But the thing is, Brackenridge Park has been used for a very long time, longer than I've been around, by people who love it, by families, and not just on Easter. You know, they go out on Sunday afternoons, they go out and enjoy it. Office workers go and eat their lunch out there. It's a wonderful resource. It is not a zoo. Yes, there's a zoo in the middle of it, but don't confuse this with some kind of a zoo where, as the gentleman said, "We as invasive species come in and visit it." No. Brackenridge Park is a living, breathing part of our community, and I hope that the you all planners will take that into consideration and not impose a sort of grand idea on it, but will work everything that you do into what the people are already doing so that you don't uproot everything and make people do what they don't feel like doing. It's our park. It's our park. Now, that being said, there's a lot of good ideas in this plan, and we really do, we did not address that in my community meeting. It was just the idea that they were going to suddenly wall us off from the park and make us get into little trams like it was Disney World or whatever, and go around to our little picnic tables, and that's really unacceptable. It's not in harmony with the way things are being used. If you want impervious cover, that's easy. It's easy to make parking lots into impervious cover, I'm sorry, impervious cover, you know, coverage by just, you know, to tear up the asphalt, of course. You could even do that with the roads, and you could make bike paths and all kinds of other stuff. But anyway, I think you get the idea of where we are as an organization and where I am personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Might be more?
I might be more. I've lived in San Antonio. I'm fourth generation San Antonio. I've been here all my life, and I grew up in Brackenridge Park, learned how to ride a horse there. To this day, I walk every day there. I walk two miles a day. You say you want to preserve, protect, and restore the park. I say if you're worried about pavement, impervious cover, lay down, as he said, pavers or porous concrete, or you can even grass and then mow the streets. I say you have to allow the owners of the park, that are all sitting in this room, the citizens of the city own San Antonio. They own the park. And I say you can't say to the people that own a piece of property that they do not have complete and free access anyway, anytime that they want to go into their park, including accessing back and forth through Hildebrand in and out of the park. I don't think you should restrict any access at all in the park, and I don't think there should be parking garages. There's lots of free parking. There's a thousand, I went and counted them, there's a thousand spaces of parking just up the hill from the zoo where people are parking all over the place, and 600 of those thousand spaces are shaded by the freeway overhead. I can't understand why there needs to be any parking garages, certainly not trams. You need to involve the users of the park in all of your plans. These people and the people that use the park are not informed. I have handed out 200 flyers since April as I walk through the park every day, and yet once, not once, have ever met a person who already knew what's going on with these plans. You guys are not informing the people. Thank you. Thank you. I think the golf course lease expires next year. I think it should be taken back to the, by the people. You have four and five generations of golfers that don't get to play golf there anymore because you've made it too expensive. The trees have been butchered, the riverbanks denuded, and they are eroding. They dump fertilizer and chemicals into the river on a regular basis, and I guess what I'm wondering is it Parks and Recreation who oversees what those people are doing to the golf course vegetation? Who oversees them, what they're doing?
Yes, that is the charge of the city and Parks and Recreation.
And so you're letting them butcher the trees, and yet you're saying you want to do invasive species removal. Why aren't you doing it, and why aren't you taking care of the vegetation at the golf course? And why aren't the four and five generations of Mexican people that used to play golf there all the time not there anymore? And how come every time I go walking, my dogs all over the golf courses because there's no golfers there? I don't know. It needs to be taken back. If you want a green space, take back the golf course next year. And there's plenty of grand lawn there. Or take up the driving range, and I'm going to finish so you can put the timer in your pocket. I think you should, I think you've spent $250,000 on advisors and landscape architects, and I'm sure that's part of the planning for the parking garages. And I guess what I want to know, Homer, is you said the park use won't change, and I'm curious how will the park use not change? You can't drive into the park. You can't, you're going to have to ride a tram to use the park. You're forced to use a tram to use the park. There's only one-way streets. You can't park on the streets. There are turnarounds like when you come into Red Bud that you can't drive back, you can't go on into the park. You're closing roads to cars. You're closing Avenue A at the Woodlawn Crossing. Well, that will very much change how people use the park. I don't understand your repeated comment that park use won't change. I say you need to start over, and you need to involve the real park users, the citizens that own the park. Thank you. And as for me, I love to drive through the park. I know people who read the paper in the park with their coffee every morning, and if you try to stop the people that own the park, and if you decide to stop me from driving through my park, you are going to open yourself a can of whoop ass.
Thank you. Susanna Segura followed by Jean Elder.
I'm Susanna. I live here in District Four, and I just want the design team to raise their hands. Everybody that's in the room that's part of the design team, please raise your hands. Three people. How many people total are on the design team? Kirby Hightower?
Uh, I think there are maybe twelve firms, but twelve leaves are right there.
Twelve firms.
Twelve firms.
Twelve firms. So it's $227,000 to put together a drafted Brackenridge master plan. There were, there was already a Brackenridge master plan, and so now you're making proposed changes, correct?
Well, I had another question. In fact, when I was probably adopted, it was about 1976. I'm sorry about that. That came out of my system, a lot of these things. That might cause us more issues.
Okay. So I just want everybody in this room to be aware, like who is on the design team. It's unfortunate that we've, you received the money, I guess April through a vote by the city council, and we're just now getting community input. These are the experts right here. Everybody's sitting around me. They're experts. They know how to use the park. I come from a working-class family. My parents raised three children on what I later found out in high school was a poverty income. That was our free space. We went there, when we would go to the park, it would cost a lot of effort and self-restriction on our part to have enough money for all of us to go to the zoo. So then we'd park at the parking lot, we'd go into the zoo. We couldn't afford to buy drinks. We couldn't buy food. It's expensive. We would go back to the car during lunchtime, and we would bust out the picnic, the ice chest. That's how it works. That's what people do. I'm opposed to closing off vehicular access. I'm not opposed to one-way vehicular access to the park, but people need to be able to park wherever they want to be. I'm mobility impaired. I recently went on a neighborhood tour, and I had to crawl into the van. That's embarrassing. You have to take that into account. People don't want to ride trams if they don't have to. If they can get themselves around, they will. I don't bring my walker. I don't bring my walking stick. I don't bring my wheelchair, because it's embarrassing for me. I'm newly mobility impaired. It's a year and a half. I'm still dealing with it. But you have to understand that people use the park, and this is how they use the park. I would hate to see parking garages go up around the perimeter of the park. That will then destroy the view shed of the park. That would be horrible. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want people to have to pay more money just to use an amenity that's already free. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you. Jean Elder followed by Mark Sullivan.
Yes. Hi, I'm Jean Elder, and I live in the River Road area, and I do observe the park on a daily basis. I go there, and I drive through there, and I see exactly what's going on. And the entrance that you're proposing at the zoo, you have not included the fact that that is a two-lane path that goes up around to the Alamo Stadium in Trinity University, which when they have activities at the Laureate Auditorium or the football stadium, it is an impacted situation to the point of being dangerous because the traffic does not move. So to make the entrance to the zoo is not taking into consideration that that's making the situation worse. The way it is now, it seems to be fine. There doesn't seem to be a problem getting to the zoo. And of course, then you're talking about, you know, the park is talking out of both sides of your mouth about these road situations. You say you're not going to do anything, but all you do is talk about how you're going to change it, and the Hildebrand entrance and exit would just make the situation even worse because people that are coming to go to the baseball diamond or just come into that part of the park, that is a very convenient way to do that. We're used to it, so why change it? And then if you're going to close it, then you're making, you're saying that we need to go over to the zoo to get into the park and wind all the way around to the other side, and then you can't get out, so you have to come all the way back around to get out. And then on the Red Oak Street, which is the street that goes into Mulberry, this is how, Mulberry between St. Mary's and Broadway is a two-lane path, and sometimes it's very convenient to be able to get out of those traffic jams by going into the park. And you're saying that you want to make a little roundabout at the end of the street. So in other words, you're saying you want to make a dead end. Is that correct? Yes, the idea is the turnaround's mid-block. And so what's the point of that? Why would you want to make a roundabout at the end of the street so that you can't get anywhere? And you know, the other thing is that I keep pointing up at the other two meetings that I've come to is that when you screw up the roads into the park, this becomes a dangerous situation if there's any kind of emergency. You can't get a police car in there or an ambulance because you've got a roundabout at the end of the street where they, so then they have to go all the way back around and come in, you know, Toledo, or, of course, they can't come in Hildebrand to the emergency because you've closed that off. They have to go into the zoo. So you're screwing up the streets, and we keep telling you not to do that, and you're not listening.
Thank you. Mark Sullivan followed by Rebecca Alvarez.
Thank you all for being here and taking your time out to be here. Appreciate it because we all do recognize this is an important issue. Our parks are very important to us all. Plato said, "If you're not active politically, you risk being governed by those less intelligent than you." So, yeah. So I grew up in San Antonio, and I know Brackenridge Park very well. I swam at the boathouse at Lambert Beach. I have enjoyed it as a child with my grandparents, with my parents, myself and my wife, my children, and now my grandchildren. That's five generations of my family have enjoyed this park. I know this park very well. I have attended every meeting that the Parks and Recreation Department has put on regarding this Brackenridge Park master plan, and nobody likes this plan. Sorry, Homer. Nobody likes this plan. I think it's one of those things where people say, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." So now, I'm older and a little wiser, and I've seen many things in my day, and I can see that this is, this is a poorly designed plan with many defects, and it appears to be drafted by developers for the benefit of the developers and not for the benefit of the owners of the park. And that's all of us. That's you too. We're the owners of that park. We own our parks, the citizens of San Antonio, and we recently lost the headwaters of the Asequiamadre was covered over in Brackenridge Park. Did you know about this? We lost the headwaters of the very Asequiamadre, and then you're talking about making this a protected site, and then we lost the historic Alligator Gardens. Where did that go? It's paved over. So Brackenridge Park was dedicated as a public park for the people forever, just like Hemisphere Park is. So I humbly request that you, one, throw out this plan and start over. Two, do not ignore us and try to submit this plan to city council. Three, do not ask us for any more money in this next bond until you can show us that you can be responsible stewards of our parklands and protect our parks and keep greedy developers out of our parks. So, thank you. I'm almost finished. Just another, okay. So on that note, please get our Hemisphere Park back. It is your job to protect our parks. Now you're letting these developers build 430 apartments on our park and two hotels in our park. Does that change the park use? Is this how you protect our parks? How can we trust you with our parks? You lost Hemisphere. Now get our Hemisphere Park back, and don't ask us for any more money until you first get those developers out of our Hemisphere Park and you preserve and protect our cultural resources.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Next up, Rebecca D. Alvarez followed by Maria Davalo Salinas.
The first thing I want to say is that Brackenridge Park doesn't belong to the city of San Antonio. It belongs to the residents of San Antonio. And basically, what I want to say is that I'm very leery of a master plan. This is the first meeting I have come to. I've heard very little about it on the news and media. I was handed a flyer when my husband and I were coming out of the Witty Museum a few weeks ago, and my first reaction was, "They're gonna mess it up." I just, I just had that feeling. And after seeing your plan here, I do, I do believe I was correct in that. So I'm, I'm very leery of a master plan that will significantly change our Brackenridge, our beloved Brackenridge Park. I believe some of the plans are, some of the plans are improvements that will modernize the park, but I believe the parking changes and the, and the road changes are what trouble me the most. And I believe this is also gentrifying Brackenridge Park as you all have done to some of the neighborhoods, and that will push out most of the San Antonians that grew up using this park. And that, and I think you're all are aiming it more for the middle class, the tourists that are, that are coming in, and you're taking it, the use away of that park from our own people, blocking our people out of the park. And these so-called plans that you say are quote "not set in stone," I think sometimes when you see plans like this already drawn up, I think they are, and you're just trying to make us feel better by pretending to listen to us. See? That's what I'm saying, by pretending to listen to us. So history tells me that you're going to do what you want to do anyway, and it's going to leave people out of our park. And remember, you just added parking spaces and picnic areas and walkways to the park that I see people using. And so what if there are a lot of folks there on Sunday? Those are San Antonians. They have the right to do it. They bring their cars. My husband and I don't, we've only been there a couple of times, but we do use the park. We, I have, we have a membership at the Witty. We have a membership at the zoo. We walk the trails, and we enjoy the park. But when I saw this plan that y'all are going to change the roads and add parking garages and trams and things like that, I said, "I can go to Disney World to do that," okay? But, and if you want to really remove impervious cover, try removing it from the offer. That is where we need to have more green spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Davalo Salinas followed by Cynthia Brim.
So my name is Maria Davalo Salinas. I'm the president of the Mission Democrats of Bear County, so I believe I should get my nine minutes. So let me first start off by saying that, you know, I came to this meeting, and one of the first things that you say is that this is the sixth meeting, and you make it sound so pretty and so good that Parks and Rec and city council decided, "We're going to open this up to the community," which is a total falsehood, because you had two meetings with residents around the park, and then someone found out, and community activists, Maria Barrezobal, Esperanza Puesa Unida, you had started, you had people that started getting basically on your butts saying, "We deserve to have community meetings." So to stand up here, and I feel like I'm talking to city council because I've seen your reactions to most people talking, and you're here because you have to be here, not because you feel that this is the right thing to do, not because-
Not because you feel that the people have a right to speak, but because it's your duty and it's your job to be here. Well, you know what? It's our duty as citizens to be here, to speak up on behalf of all the people that never heard about this meeting. The problem with city council, the problem with Parks and Recreation is that, what did you all do to notify all the people? There's hundreds of people around this area. My mother-in-law lives down the street. She never heard about this meeting. There was nothing done. It was community activists that flyer. It was my organization that sent out hundreds of emails and put it on Facebook and paid to put it on Facebook so that people would find out. But the people that truly use the park, earlier you said, "Well, we want to make it useful for the residents around there." Most residents around there probably have never stepped foot in that park. It's the poor people. It's the people that live on the south side, the west side, and the east side. The people that have no place else to go but to take their kids on a Sunday and drive to the park. I asked you earlier about paying. You said, "No." You know what? The city lies. Everything that comes out of your mouth, eventually what we all will say, "Well, it was a private company that built the parking garage, so they have their right to charge." Or the tram, they're privately owned, so if they want to charge a fee, that's up to them. So the city washes its hands, as it usually does, and we're supposed to say, "Oh, yeah, well, you have a good point there." Well, I think that everyone here, what everyone here is saying is that we demand that you listen to us, because I'm speaking for hundreds of people, thousands of people that have no idea what you're going to do, that have no idea about this town. And that you have made no effort to contact those people. The papers made an effort. The papers putting out, Expresso is putting out articles. The community activists are putting out articles. Susan Segura has not stopped. I applaud you for that. Maria Barrezobal, everyone here has not stopped. But you all stopped. You all stopped when you spent the money to have this done, and now think, "Okay, well, let me make this cute little presentation, and then, yeah, I'll listen, but I'm not really even going to look at the speaker like you're not looking at me right now." But because really, what are you here for? You're not really here to hear the people. So a couple of my other questions would be, you say that there's going to be access to the park, but yet here you say, "Regular days restricted vehicle use, multi-use path only." Okay. Our people are used to driving into the park. The south side people, the west side people, the east side people, we're used to driving in there. We're used to being able to park wherever we want, have a picnic. Sometimes I don't have money, but I take my granddaughters down there, and they feed the ducks. A lot of people do that. A lot of people don't have what other people have. And so what you're taking away is from the people, the poor of our city. Again, it's gentrification, just like Mission Trails was. It's, it always comes back to gentrification. It's for the best. Okay, you want to bring tourists in. How many, okay, so a tourist comes in once. How about the family that goes out there five times? How about the hundreds of families that have for generations gone on Easter Sunday and spent their Easters there? What, at some point, because you don't really know what's going to happen, is there going to be fees charged to those families? Or are there, it says here that you can drive in to drop off. Okay, so are you going to hire more park police to make sure that that's happening and that the flow's going through? Has any of that, I don't see anything. I've been heard you talk about any of that. What's it going to cost? What more is it going to cost there? This needs to be taken back to the beginning, and it needs to be, you need to spend another $275,000 on questionnaires and going to city neighborhoods, not to developers to ask their opinion as to what should be done and how the charges will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Brim followed by Maria Barrezobal.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cynthia Brim, and I am a student at St. Mary's University. I'm embarking on my second career. One of the things that we're studying right now is conflict resolution. And one of the things that I recommend that this panel does is a book that I'm currently reading, and that is called Managing Public Disputes. Please write that down, because what that means is they take the entire community, special interest groups, civic groups, activists. They take residents from the neighborhood. They take the developers. They take the developers. They take the city. They take everybody within the entire fabric of the community. They bring them together, and they select certain people to be representative, like Maria Davalos, to be representative of her group. And she speaks for those people. And then they put these panels across the board, and everybody writes down what's important to them. And then they come up with a plan. A plan that's totally representative of the people. Our government is of the people, for the people, and by the people, not representative of one person that created a plan to fit the people. That is what we need. We need to have a consensus. And like everyone has repeatedly said here today, we need to start over. You need to do this for the people. So that's why I'm here, is to make this known to you. You need to start over and do it right instead of wasting our money and putting one man's vision to accommodate a whole bunch of people, and it just doesn't work.
Thank you, Ms. Brim. Maria Davalos Salinas, followed by Edward Juarez.
First of all, you were not at the Guadalupe. Another gentleman from Parks and Recreation was there, so I'll repeat what I said then. It's very awkward to be speaking to you because I know you're not the one that got up one day and said they were gonna change Brackenridge Park, but you're the one they sent. And that itself is awkward because I still don't know who we are talking to and who all these comments are going to go to. I was told that they are for the team, for the architects. And it would have been very good if from the beginning all the architects and all the people who put that plan together would have been in front, so we could talk to them and ask them the questions. And this lady said a lot of what I was going to say about process. And that's what I'll address again, and that's process. As has been indicated already, the reason these meetings were held is because some of us asked for them. And I don't know if Councilor Mendiavino is still here. Thank you, I appreciate that he has, that he came and that he has, you know, stayed with us. So he and the park staff facilitated having the meetings, and that's good. However, I went to one meeting. I attended this one. I watched the videos of the others, and I got records of the ones that are not recorded. And there is overwhelming opposition to certain parts of this plan. There are feelings that certain groups of people are being let down. And it's messy because what should have been done at the beginning, which is listen to the people, is being done now. So that's why people are frustrated, and people, you know, have been left out, and that's terrible. So I think, in fairness, again, I don't know what's going to be done with the input of the people. God bless NACAS because at least it's recorded, but I don't think the city officially recorded anything. And we want the City Council to hear all this. So what I read in the last page of the master plan that perhaps is still online and could have been taken off was that the plan would be taken to City Council, to the planning department in June. And then the City Council would vote on it in August. I think that absolutely should not be done because that would mean that all these comments that all these people had that have brought out some issues that had not been discussed before, we want the answers to all those questions and responses to all those comments. This has to be, the deadline has to be moved, I think indefinitely. I hope that nothing related to parking garages or Brackenridge Park is included in any bond issue because you'll take the whole bond issue down. And that this work needs to be scratched and start all over again. And I feel bad because that's an investment of almost a fourth of a million dollars that went to these architects. So right now, my suggestion, request, is to just stop. Listen to what the people said. Start all over again and do justice to the people who are using Brackenridge Park now and have been using it for generations. And it's people who don't have backyards and don't have parks next to them. And it's up close with a testimony that has already been mentioned of a lady that went to the Guadalupe. She said she was a single mom, had several children. She drove through the park to entertain her children when she could. And if she could spare $20, she bought them some chicken for a picnic. Those are the users of the park.
And please hand, address some of your points. All of the comments that have been collected throughout the six meetings will be co-ordinated by the project team as we look at refining, based on public input, the plan. And we actually, yes, NACAS has been presidents at several of the meetings, and we also have a videographer here as well. So the city is also recording that as well. So we've got a couple of entities that are doing that. But thank you for your comments. Next up is Edward Juarez, followed by Olga K. Last name begins with a K. I'm sorry, I can't read it. Thank you. Ed Juarez, is Ed still here? Okay, so next up is Olga. Followed by, thank you, followed by Monica Cruz.
Thank you. I'm not a Lady San Antonio. I didn't come to San Antonio until I was at St. Mary's University. I was a student. And I grew up in the Rio Grande Valley where we had no parks. We might have a little placita somewhere, but that's about it. So if you wanted to play in the green, beautiful nature, we would have to go play in the cotton field or the corn field, which is no fun. So when I got to San Antonio, a bunch of my friends that lived here took me to Brackenridge Park, and I thought I had died and gone to heaven. There was greenery. There was water. It was beautiful. And it was free. And we could park anywhere we wanted and walk anywhere we wanted. And I fell in love with it. We went to Sunken Gardens. We went to the zoo. And it was very affordable for a really poor college student. When I grew up and got married and had kids, my kids had the privilege of going to Brackenridge Park. And they're only 14 months apart, so it's like having twins. And if you ever had two toddlers to the park, you know how much stuff you have to carry? You know, two strollers, two diaper bags, you know, a bunch of meals, a lot of food. And we didn't have to worry about that because we just put everything in the car. We'd park and just take everything out. We didn't have to worry about taking a tram or finding a parking garage. We'd just go. And it became a family weekend tradition. They learned to ride horses there. They did all these things. And I would hate to think that all of that is gonna go away and that my grandchildren will be able to enjoy that and have the privilege of growing up in Brackenridge Park. So I think that some of these plans, if you had asked any families like me or anyone in this room, they would have said, "No. We don't want the roads closed. We don't want a parking garage. We don't want trams." You know, you can't take two toddlers and all that stuff and schlepp them in a tram and get to where you wanna go. Grandmother can't walk all the way to the tram and get on the tram and get off the tram. So I think some of this are not designed for the people that today use the park. And we need to continue that. This park belongs to the people. In 1899, this park was founded on land that was deeded to the city by George Brackenridge. And the park was meant to be used by all San Antonians. Well, except Mexicans. I think there was a "deed" in there. No, Alfa, no Mexicans. So we still need to use the park anyway. But I think that some of these new changes are regular, keep up some of the poorest and most grateful families that love Brackenridge Park and consider part of their family tradition. So I would advise the committee or whoever is in charge of this, to start over. And please make sure that you get community input if you wanna make any changes in the park. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm here also just to publicly state my concerns regarding the plans for the park. All the points that have been made prior regarding accessibility, I tend to be concerned about. I think we certainly have to think about the multigenerational use of families that use the park. When we think of having individuals park in a parking garage and take a tram and all that, I think we are neglecting to really take into consideration the beauty of many of our intergenerational families that are big families. And so you will go through, as many of us go through Brackenridge, and you'll see the beauty of familias getting together on a Sunday afternoon. And you have tíos and tías and primos and abuelos. You take two or three cars to get your familia down there, and you try and go early so that you can all park together. And when you think about a picnic out there, we don't, you know, our familias, we're not like, you know, cheese and crackers and fruit kind of things. We bring our fajitas with coolers and our folia, and we bring our potato salad, and that's a lot of food to haul oftentimes. So we really, you know, I guess I'm here to ask for all of those that are part of this process right now, to really open your doors, open your minds. Let San Antonio be a city that exemplifies inclusivity and not exclusivity when you think about public policy, when you think about decision-making. Let's try to set an example for other cities around the country with all that we're hearing these days, with the diversity that's happening and the pain that's happening in many of our communities. Let us be an example where we think and we ask ourselves, "Who's sitting at the table, but who is not sitting at the table?" Obviously, you have many hearings already, and you have, I think, very, you know, key individuals that I think can offer very sound advice and thoughtfulness about the process. And so I encourage you and our city officials to consider bringing those individuals to the table to begin this process and to really rethink it and to do it well. I think that's very important. I guess my last point is a quote that I often think about. "When you want to do something fast, you do it alone. But when you wanna do something well, we do it together." So let's try and do that.
Donna Gueda, followed by Jessica Guerrero.
Hi, I'm Donna Gueda. I grew up in San Antonio, and I just have a few points that I wanna bring up. First of all, I did read about, I'm concerned about the Mediflores section of the park as well. And I did find somewhere online that there's already a master plan for that. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's being carried out in conversation? Have they been in conversation with this plan? Or is it being done separately by a different group of, I think it's RBK who's doing that, the architectural team?
Right, so as part of this master plan process, one of the things the project team did look at was taking into consideration the master plan that is already in place for Mediflores, but that project is separate from this one.
Okay, so is the Mediflores master plan about making it accessible to all people? Or is it still gonna stay in its fenced-off area of the people's areas?
So in that master plan, it does look at how we can make that open and accessible to the public at that point, around that point right now, in doing that.
Can we see that master plan? Can you put, is it up and I didn't find it, or?
Yes, I can, I'll get your contact information, but we do have it available for public viewing, so most definitely we can get that.
Yeah, if you put it on your website, just as, you know, related, if documents of interest, I'm sure everyone would like to keep that.
Sure, good idea. Thank you.
Okay. And just briefly on the great run. You know, we're shade seekers here in San Antonio, and I've enjoyed the great run and the park at times, but that climate and the range of temperatures makes it exciting and inviting to go out to a great run here. I would just run, you know, like, "Get me out of that space. I need a tree. I need some shade." So it really doesn't work for our area. It's not San Antonio-relevant, I think. I just wanna say that I agree with a lot of the people that have spoken here about, you know, behind. And I think the creative team, you know, certainly is creative, but we're here having all of this dynamic conversation because as public servants, you all, you know, you work for us. And this process has been, you know, best efforts, as you well. And so we wouldn't be here if the process had originally included us, the people you work for. And so just, I hope, I don't know if people have said it. I hope it's a learning moment for our public government. I hope something good comes out of this. But it's very distressing that we have to even be here and that it was conducted that way. You know, I think part of what I perceive is, or I think I've heard it said, that, you know, this whole Broadway corridor development. People, you know, I know families that can't afford the $12 per person entry fee of the museum, right? Everything along that way, I can because, you know, I'm a little bit in class. I can go there once in a while. I can use the Pearl. I can use all the fancy places once in a while. I can't do it a lot. It'll break my back. But, so the idea of, it seems like this park has been running through the Broadway corridor, and I just think that's wrong. This has been a people's park. This has been a community park. I mean, in a wide sense, San Antonio, all over, not just the west side, not just the east side. You know, north side people use the park. What will be taken away? I really haven't found a problem with cars in the park. I think keeping the cars, like, the park is, would be a, I want that to remain. I have, you know, family photos. I'm sure you all do too. We have Super 8 films that show us, you know, having fun in the park, kids' birthday parties, whatnot. I don't, I was thinking, "Gosh, do I have to start a website that's, you know, the history of the Brackenridge Park, the people's park?" Don't let us do that. We don't wanna memorialize it. We want it to stay current. We want it to continue to be a people's park. And the Broadway corridorizing of it will be a huge mistake. And, gee, I'm sorry, I'm taking a little bit long, but I can't read my little scribble. So my own current use of the park is that I work at Car Works. And so when I need to get out of the office, you know, I'll grab my lunch and I'll drive my car to a picnic table or the banquet, and just sit there and enjoy my lunch and get away in this beautiful spot. And, or I'll, sometimes driving home, I'll say, "Let me drive through the park" because it's so pleasant. I've never had a traffic jam. I've never had an issue. I really don't think cars through the park is an issue, which, you know, goes to say, I think parking garages, no, you know? So, "Please, keep this a people's park. It's been a San Antonio-wide park." This will change that. This will change the use of the park, the joyful spontaneity of going to the park.
Thank you. Jessica Guerrero, followed by Monica Ariaga.
Buenas tardes. My name is Jessica Guerrero. I am born and raised in San Antonio, in District 3, where there was no meeting house. I worked in the southwest side, in District 4. All of the south side was absolutely left out. The additional meetings that came up, you know, that were already in the story of how it came up. So I don't want to be too redundant, but I do want to reiterate my concern as much as many people's concern around the process, right? Maria Davalos Salinas brought up, you know, that we're hearing this nice story of how y'all, so, comply with us, you know, to add these meetings. Yes, you added them. You should have had them in the first place. Once you added them, you still add a really huge part of the city council. So there is much work to be done around this process. It is not only the Department of Parks and Recreation. We know that this is unfortunately part of a much larger, much deeper, much nastier culture within our city government of excluding communities most impacted by the decisions that are being made. I'm super frustrated with this. I'm really done with it. And I'm so glad that that many more people are as well. I would like to know if... more people are as well. I would like to know specifically, what happens next, right? So you gave us the meetings, you're taking your notes, you brought a camera out to the last meeting. Now, Cass, you know, picked up the slack for you and there means for that. What happens next? How do we know that our ideas, our suggestions, our questions, how are those being addressed? Where is the follow-up?
So as far as the next steps, all of the meetings that have been occurred to date, comments, whether they've been emailed, public comments by Susan Sandoz Speed, the support based on the vision boards in the back, all of that is going to be correlated by the project team. And we will provide and make that information available to the public. Next step will be for the Parks and Recreation Department to update the Neighborhoods and Livability Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Ravino. And so that will be the next step in the process, was to make sure they have an understanding of where we're at in the process and then develop further steps from that point forward. But everything that's been made available to the project team through input from the public, that information will be shared.
Thank you. And I appreciate sort of getting a little bit of a dialogue in this setting, which we don't see in a lot of other community meetings. So thank you for that. But we still need much more dialogue and exchange from that. And I'm going to ask, when you say that it will be made available to the public house, do you know how it?
Yeah. So, for example, we have comment cards in the back that we're going to be scanning and uploading to our website, because that's been some of the things that citizens have asked, is, you know, what about the information? How are we going to see that? So we'll be uploading those directly. It's not going to reflect a tabulation of anything. It's going to be exactly as written. That'll be uploaded to the Parks and Recreation website. We do have a dedicated web, excuse me, a dedicated webpage for the Brackenridge Park Master Plan. In addition, we uploaded the last public meeting that was recorded. And we'll be doing so again with this one. So all of those comments that come in, we'll be providing that information on our website. That's one way. After we do the update to Neighborhoods and Livability, we are looking at how we can also report out to the community, possibly in another setting like this, getting back out, saying, here's, you know, here's what, I guess, occurred to date. Here's what came out of the Neighborhoods and Livability Committee meeting. And then share that information with the public.
Can you take in this information out of the box? What's the name of the website? Somebody can write it down, please.
Yes. Can you ask him the name of the website?
Yeah. So if you go to our, the Parks and Recreation website, you have a banner that's scrolling. So sanantonoparksandrecreation.gov. And then on that website, on that front page, you've got the scroller. And it's front and center, that the Brackenridge Park Master Plan process. And it includes these vision boards that we have here this evening. It includes the video that we uploaded from last week. It will include the public comment cards as well, those items that we talked about uploading. And you'll find it on our webpage. You click on that banner. Yes, ma'am.
In case anybody didn't hear, it's www.santonio, that's all one word together, no space, .gov, G-O-V, slash parks and rec, R-E-C. And there's no spaces in that. So www.santonio.gov/parksandrec. And on the front page, you'll see the Brackenridge. A-N-D, P-A-R-K-S, A-N-D, R-E-C.
Thank you, Lynn, for clarification.
Thank you for that. And if I could just suggest also, or make sure that you know that many organizations, community groups are represented here. And I'm sure it's been represented throughout the meetings that you've had. I would suggest contacting them as well to see if we can help facilitate the information. If not, all of our community members can get to a computer or look it up on their phone. That gets really complicated, even if they do have online service on their phone. So maybe we can start to work a little bit better together with those groups that can help you connect to the city. I'm sorry, or to the community. And I know my time is running out, but you took some of it and I appreciate it. So let me just add one thing real quick. And I belong to a few groups. I can take about ninety minutes, but I won't. No, I just wanted to say really quick that we, a few of us did do some filing at Brackenridge Park, also at Woodlawn Park. And people were very, very afraid that some of the things that they see happening at Brackenridge Park, at Hemisfer, you know, might soon come to Woodlawn. We were talking to people that had a camp there overnight, people that were coming in from out of town and had a camp there overnight. You know, again, it's an affordable option for people. And we also did a small mela, the Feres Macharangut, the group that organized the Women's Day March. And everybody that we've talked to is absolutely, again, just to reiterate a lot of what people said, do not want to pay in any way for any type of use of Brackenridge Park. And just one more concern that I wanted to ask about is what, can you tell us more details about what you were referring to around the quality of the water, in terms of the paddleboat rides and in terms of any other concerns around water quality? And also, if I could just ask you to start thinking now about what that process is going to be for how you tell the story of the history of water. Because I saw that in the plan. And I hope that you really do take to heart that the processes that the city uses are not efficient, are not adequate. The water story is our story. And we need to be a part of it.
Thank you. I'm sorry. So I think there may have been a question buried in there, and this is it, about the water quality, what that means. So the example I use is, on the east side of the park, is a Cataca Pershing, which is, you know, man-made channel. So by restoring that to, you know, which basically conveys the water all the runoff from the streets into the river and then on down. So by restoring that to a natural setting, it allows the water to be cleaned, filtered, maybe through a rain garden, and before it ends up in the river. So that's one example of how looking at preserving those cultural or historic assets within the park, we can do that in a way that improves the water quality, but allows it to retain its functionality for conveying water during periods of heavy rain.
Well, the Pershing joke, it's non-functional. It is not carrying any water from San Antonio or whatever. It's been blocked by a parking garage. And it's totally non-effective. I have no problem with you wanting to make it look nicer. But don't kid yourself about what it's doing.
So I would just add that to the many reasons for why this sign is to be popped. There are many issues of, you know, water contamination concerns throughout the city. And I think we would all love to take a closer look at what that means within this sign.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I would like to say that I put them online like this minute at sanantonio.gov/parksandrec. There's not a darn thing in there about Brackenridge Park process. Not a. So where do we go?
There's a banner scrolling at top. So I'm going to ask Lynn to...
Why don't you tell the audience, everybody would like to know how to find what he just got to saying and she just got to saying, where it is. It's not there.
Is it the mobile display?
I think maybe it's the mobile display, the way it's coming up on the... So you have to look at it on a computer or an iPad? It's not mobile-friendly?
I can look into it.
Did you get it to somebody? She got it on her. So maybe it's my...
It's a little slow, Lynn. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Monica Ariaga.
Hello, everyone. My name is Monica Ariaga. And I would just like to start out by conveying my concerns as well and echo the sentiments of concerns over this process being ministerial in nature. And that even though you are taking strides to put a report together with comments and videography, to memorialize everything that's being said, how do we know that City Council is going to take any of that into consideration? And I would also like to know, will City Council be in any way held accountable to actually watch and read any reports and video history on the comments of the citizens of San Antonio?
So with regards to, I guess, the sincerity or listening to all the comments that have been collected, you know, when I started, I kind of pointed out that through the civic engagement and leadership of Maria Vero Salvo, identifying the need and lack of additional public input in this process, reached out to Councilman Ravino. And through his leadership, he did engage his colleagues. And even this evening, Councilman Taldana walked in and streamed. So we, they're here, they're listening. And they know that our charge is to come back and share with them exactly what has transpired, what is the public sentiment regarding these strategies. And we're going to do that at the Neighborhoods and Livability Committee meeting in August. And that's an opportunity for direct dialogue with the council subcommittee regarding the public comments, the inputs, and where we go next. So their, Councilman Ravino's leadership in engaging his colleagues to help deliver these meetings in quadrants across the city is a reflection of their commitment to the process and Park's response to stepping up and meeting that challenge and sharing that commitment.
Thank you. I also have a follow-up question regarding your livability committee. You just mentioned that it's a City Council Subcommittee that will be in attendance of that particular meeting. Is that what I understood you to say?
The last part that, so...
A City Council Subcommittee that will be in attendance at the Livability Committee meeting?
So, okay, so the...
Our community meeting?
Yeah. The Neighborhoods and Livability Committee is a council subcommittee.
Okay.
And so typically, the process is, we provide a briefing and update. And then from that point forward, receive direction before it comes back to the full council.
And where is the information derived that's going to be shared or discussed at this Livability Committee meeting?
So the information is derived from the public comments from each of the meetings. It's derived from the comment cards that we'll be uploading. It's derived from the boards in the back, which are, larger version of what you have in your hand, there's a scale at the bottom. From that, from each meeting, we've been tracking the level of support through placement of dots. So that will be tabulated. And all of that will, I mean, the update will reflect all of that information. So in multiple forms, we have surveys on iPads in the back that allow citizens a different way. They know specifically what they feel and they don't need the one-on-one questions by the station. So all of that information is where, or all of those forms, is how we're getting that information back. And then even on the website that Ms. Moore was asking about, there's an email address dedicated to comments for this Brackenridge Park Master Plan. So those email comments as well will be part of that process.
I would also like to state that as a mother of a handicapped child who was wheelchair-bound his entire life, I am very aware of access for that particular part of our community. And it seems to me that the way, the form of the park right now and the ability of those to drive through the park, park in spaces that are close to picnic areas and picnic tables, are very accessible to wheelchair-bound or mobility-challenged people. And my concern is that if we have trams and if we have a kind of banned access, where are these people going to be dropped off? How far are they going to be expected to get to a picnicking area, if you will? I was just in the park about two or three days ago, driving through, as I believe one of our other citizens mentioned that she does sometimes during lunch or after work. And I noticed that there was a young lady in a wheelchair who had just arrived to the park. She was able to park in a slot that was maybe 20 to 50 feet away from a picnicking area with her family. And they began to have a celebration, which I thought was a very beautiful thing. Because the way our park is now, it is very inclusive of our entire community. And I think that we need to have voices from all factions, not just socioeconomic areas, but also those citizens who have a vested interest, as we all do, in the park remaining the way it is, rather than trying to make changes to areas, if you will, that are not broken, that don't really require fixing. And to not take in as account for the opinions of us as citizens, to me, is very disturbing. And if the Livability Committee meeting is going to take place in August, how far in advance of the actual City Council vote will that be that is going to occur in August?
So there's no council vote that occurs in August. The purpose of the Neighborhoods and Livability Committee meeting will be simply to update them on the public comments and where we're at thus far. At that point, we will take direction from the Livability Committee. And, you know, it's likely going to be that we need to, still need to report out to the public. And refine, based on all of the feedback from the multiple meetings, refine the strategies. Maybe, you know, some are moved forward, maybe some don't. But that's going to be before there's any type of council vote by the council to adopt the master plan. That is still quite a way down the road. No date has been set yet for that to happen, just to update the Livability Committee in August and then receive further direction at that point while we work to refine the master plan.
Thank you very much. I just also want to add that I'm also a member of Mission Democrats of Barre County. And I invite anyone here and everyone here to attend our meet and greet, which will be held on July 21st at the Latuna Restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Albert Uresti, followed by Carol Aguirre.
My name is Albert Uresti. I'm a fair economy tax assessor and represent close to too many people here in the county. And the reason I'm here is because you told me we're going to put a new school boy up in the park. Is that right? Anyway, the, first of all, I do want to thank all our citizens and all our groups that are here for being here. Because, you know, I know you have to be home eating or do whatever. So I commend you all for being here. And I also want to commend, you know, Councilman Ravino and Councilman Taldana for being here. So I think Ray, you're a newlywed, aren't you, Ray? Someone who's a newlywed. So Ray's here, and Councilman Ravino, and of course, our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Agones. Thank you for being here. And I will add that the Woodlawn Park fireworks thing was great. But seriously, what I'm asking here is that you all, you know, when you do make a final decision, that you do take all the input that's been given, not only here, but throughout the city, and that you consider it. And that you, and that you weigh everything that's been said. And I'm not going to repeat everything that everybody said. You know, please consider it. Please weigh it. And, you know, we have, you know, people have a lot of good ideas. And that's all I'm asking. So I just want to come by and let you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.